Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody tonight. It looks like we've got a pretty good group of people here again tonight. I kind of like seeing the room full like this. For those that haven't attended a meeting before, welcome. And just so that you know, there's some sign up sheets on that back table in the room. If you wish to speak during a citizen comment period or a public hearing, if you would sign up on the appropriate sheet, each one of them have a label on there. If you're going to speak at the citizen comment period tonight, just know that when you come up to speak, you're given counsel your comments. We're not going to interact and we're not going to talk back. We're going to listen to what you have to say. And at a later time, if you want to talk about your comments with a specific council member, a group of council members, we can arrange that and then go over your comments or concerns. Okay, item number three, has everyone had a chance to review the meeting agenda? We did just now, didn't we? Is there a motion to adopt or approve the meeting agenda as presented? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Haas Eder. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you all very much. Item number four is matters from the mayor. I just have one thing that I'd like to go over. We've had a trying 2024 as far as weather goes. Our road crews have been out nonstop it seems like since the beginning of the year. And I think they've done a great job considering the obstacles that they've had to deal with. The amount of snow that we've had plus a lot of people don't realize that not only is snow removal part of their responsibility, but keeping up our water supply or sewer lines and all that. To boot, they were out on this last snowstorm and they were doing a great job plowing. And then we had a, it was either a water line or sewer line break. And they had to pull a member of each crew off and put them to work on the water and sewer line, which slowed them down. But all in all, they've done a great job. And I want to thank our Public Works Department for doing an awesome job this year. 2022 has been a good year for them.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. And does any of my fellow council members have anything they would like to share?
Just, you know, for the benefit of the community, there's been following the current and ongoing legislative session. And there's several very promising educational bills regarding capital investments and K through 12 capital investments that we'll see what happens through committee. But one that passed through Senate Committee yesterday is regarding the local tax option, which I think we've talked about at our retreat. And so it seems to be a lot of enthusiasm to expand that across the Commonwealth. But there are numerous other K through 12 capital investment bills in play. And so just excited about that. And we've reached out to our delegation to, just for the benefit of my colleagues, to lend their support and enthusiasm as well. So just a small little update.
Thank you, Terry.
Dr. Sam, it's time for you. I'm ready to go. COVID update this week, I'm taking a little different approach. I got on the website for Augusta Health here today and looked at some of their latest numbers. The Department of Health statewide, the graph shows that maybe Omicron has sort of peaked locally. It's a little unclear whether we've reached that peak yet. In terms of the Augusta Health numbers, you know, you've heard a lot about the fact that Omicron seems to be less severe in general. But if there are many times more people who are infected, even if it's a small percentage, they're still going to fill our hospital. And that's what's been happening. So the census, as of their announcement today, 48 patients admitted at Augusta Health with COVID and eight deaths within the last week for our community. So it's still here, it's still happening, and we still have to protect ourselves and protect each other. So I encourage people to continue to mask and socially distance. I can continue to urge people to get their vaccine, their booster if they have not had it, because that's where, how we're going to protect each other and ourselves. The other thing that is happening with the numbers being up is that more healthcare workers themselves are sick. Their announcement said that 89 workers at Augusta Health are out sick. Now, I don't know that data, if they are all COVID related or if that includes all illnesses, you know, so I don't want to present it one way because I don't know. But again, the ability for the hospital to take care of the community is going to be impeded. So I encourage you again to, you know, help protect yourself and help protect each other because we're not out of the woods yet. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. All right. That moves on to item number six, let us consider adopting the consent agenda. Everyone have a chance to hear and review it on your plan? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you all very much. And then item number seven is to consider proclaiming February is Black History Month. Mr. Hamm.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council. Black History Month is celebrated annually to recognize the accomplishments of African Americans and the central role of African Americans in U.S. history. Since 1976, every U.S. president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month, calling upon the public to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of African Americans in every area and endeavor throughout history. The theme for Black History Month 2022 is Black Health and Wellness. And the celebration seeks to acknowledge the legacy of black scholars, medical practitioners in Western medicine, including physicians, nurses, midwives, naturopaths, herbalists, et cetera. The celebration highlights the importance of emotional, mental, as well as physical wellness. And I think Ms. Estelo Randolph is present this evening to receive the proclamation.
Ms. Randolph, you want to come up front here?
Good evening, city council. And it's really good to see a lot of people out here at the council meeting tonight. I just, on behalf of the community that I serve and that I represent, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you so much for always considering the fact that we all have made history and it needs to be told. And I'm so thankful that you honor us every year. And as we go forth with the COVID or Omicron or whichever comes next, we just always keep lifting each other up, knowing that we are covering the whole city that is definitely represented by everyone here. And that if we do this, guess what? We'll get through this and any and everything else that may come our way. I'm just thankful that, you know, God is so good to each and every one of you to see you in this new year. And I'm thankful again for Rosenwall Black Heritage Museum that is housed in Rosenwall Park and Recs Building. Anytime you would like to see it, please give me a call. We do it on appointment and of course it's open right now on appointments only. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Randolph, for your positive comments. Okay, item number eight is to receive a report regarding 14th Street Greenway Phase III project and provide guidance regarding the next step. Mr. Dudey.
Sorry, Ms. Randolph, for disrupting. I got my agenda items mixed up. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We briefly brought this up back in November. Unfortunately, I was out with COVID at the time. So the project, what I want to talk about today is where we're at with the Greenway Phase III project and hopefully where we can, how we can bring it to a conclusion somehow. So, but first of all, I just wanted to quickly go over the project timeline again and get a sense of how we ended up where we are. Again, the original grant application was for the Whitsel Plan, Greenway Plan Route from 2001. We had a number of project planning meetings and initial concept development in 2014. Before I arrived here, there was a large meeting at the library there, meetings with the neighborhood. Then eventually there was a grant application for which there was a public hearing and council resolution. The city received a grant in 2017 of a million dollars in order to move forward with the project. After the award of that project and the securing of an engineering firm to begin design on it, there were quite a few additional meetings with the Neighborhood Association representatives. And there was a lot of opposition to the original route, culminating in another large public meeting at the library with a route survey. And finally, in 2019, council voted to direct staff to move the route to 14th Street and to consider an option there. So since then, council or staff have been moving forward with sort of the mandate to construct something on 14th Street. So in 2020 and 2021, concepts were developed. There was an online survey of alternatives and one of those alternatives received the most votes. And it wasn't a vote, it was just an input mechanism, but it did receive the most votes and we chose it. And it was to create an on-street neighborhood greenway and reduce parking to one side only and a one-way street. Then in mid-2021 in August, we had a design public hearing, which is the last stage before you go to final plans. And we received public feedback from residents along that route. Now, the response to that designed public hearing was quite negative. We had 35 commenters who were opposed to the entire plan. Most of them were very opposed and contacted probably you all many times as well as us. The strongest objections were to the loss of parking and then to a lesser extent to the reduction to a one-way street. I say 35, but I mean some of those folks represented other people, in particular the Unitarian Universalist Church, which is on that route. Their board was strongly opposed to the project as it would reduce parking for their services. Commenters who objected to the project were more likely to live adjacent to 14th Street as opposed to commenters who supported the project. We did receive about 15 positive comments supporting the project. And some of the people who, a lot of the people who commented positively said that they hadn't intended to comment but heard that there was pushback. So in general, you know, folks will comment, especially if they're upset. But overall, I would say that we had a very negative response to that design. In response to that, we presented that information to council and council-directed staff in November of 2021 to look for other options to use that grant money to avoid having to pay it back. And so we've been doing that with VDOT since then. Working with the VDOT Local Assistance Division and our contract engineer, McCormick Taylor, staff have received tentative approval. Remember, we have to meet certain criteria for this grant to change entirely what we're doing. But staff have received tentative approval from VDOT for a scaled back plan. Without losing, rather than losing the parking and the lane of traffic, we would just essentially do sidewalk construction and improve especially crossings, curb and gutter, and ADA ramps. And we would still have the main crossing on Wayne Avenue from, at 14th Street, which I think will be really helpful for folks getting over to the Y and to the library. This would hopefully allow us to get continuous sidewalk from Wayne Avenue all the way to Magnolia. Now, we can't 100% guarantee that until it's designed and bidded because, you know, costs are fluctuating rapidly in the construction market. But our hope is that with this plan, we can avoid the city having to pay back any money and we can get continuous sidewalk along the entire route. So that's the idea behind this option. So again, we've come back with an alternative idea. And at this point, we have a number of options to move forward. The grant's been, you know, a long time in the works. And so we would like to sort of pick an option and motor ahead. And just for clarity, I've sort of put up for you the options available to you. You know, the option that we're presenting tonight is that we would proceed with this proposal that we've come up with with VDOT to just construct sidewalk, ADA ramps, and the Wayne Avenue crossing. There will be increased engineering costs. But VDOT has been open to us moving money around within the internal project budget to cover that so that the city taxpayers don't have to cover any of it. And our design professionals currently believe that the sidewalks can be constructed in the current project budget in their entirety. Option two, that's obviously available to you, is that you can proceed with the project as it was designed. This is the only option for which we have almost full design plans ready already. So that would maintain the original budget and would move forward with that 14th Street plan. Your option three is we could always return to the version of the original Cliffside Alley Route that's on the Whitsel Plan and was supported by staff in the original grant application. That said, we did not design that, so that would still be in concept. It would be essentially the same as object, option one. We'd have to go back to the beginning and redesign and move from there. And it would likely have to be a dramatically scaled back due to those funds that we've already expended. And then you also have, always have the option, number four, of closing the project entirely. If too many issues come up, you know, this has been a controversial project from the beginning and sort of no option is going to make everyone happy. We think we've come up with an alternative that will largely satisfy most folks who've commented on it. But, you know, still no one's going to be entirely happy. So there is always the option to close the project. That said, this would require local taxpayers to reimburse approximately $200,000 for engineering funds already expended on the project. So this is definitely the most expensive option for the city. Does council have any questions for staff on this?
With option number one, VDOT, conditional, you said, on approving what we're talking about on number one?
We've run it by Central Office and they've concluded, they're the ones that determine whether the project meets the grant specification. So it has to enhance pedestrian bicycle connectivity to the park. And they have said that they would be willing to do this. And they're as interested in getting this project, you know, moved off the books as we are, for sure.
So not understanding all those symbols on there, is that a pedestrian light there? Is there a?
No, there would likely be a flashing beacon. But basically what this is, is a small pedestrian refuge in Wayne Avenue so that there would be shorter distances to cross. And then there would be, the orange would be mostly new sidewalk. So in this particular block that I have shown, for example, there's already sidewalk on the north side. But in other parts of the street, there might be sidewalk on a different side. And then enhanced crossings with ADA ramps at the corners.
And that's the whole way from Wayne to the park access?
Yes. Now, we are, our absolute goal would be to try to avoid any local dollars going into this project. So if it did have a cost overrun, we would probably reduce, probably wouldn't finish sidewalk on every block. That said, this shows improvements on two sides of quite a few blocks. I'm quite confident that we would have continuous sidewalk on at least one side of the street all the way down. But yeah, there's a possibility that there would be missing blocks as the project moved forward if the cost overruns happened, so.
For clarification purposes, this option would have the least impact on street parking?
Correct. So this would, again, I'm not willing to say that there would be no parking spaces lost because there would be curb and gutter work and so forth that you might lose a space here or there at a corner. But generally, consistent parallel parking would be available on both sides of the street with this option as opposed to just one. Yes.
My preference would definitely be to see to the maximum extent, like to almost put blinders on and just get over to Magnolia. So whatever we can do, I mean, depending on what the balance of additional engineering is going to be required, you know, let's just say we have $700,000 to work with in construction. There's a lot of sidewalk that needs to get over the hill and through the woods and down to Magnolia. And I think my other observation here is that it's already problematic and for residents and families and visitors of the library to cross Wayne. And so to provide even the inference of an additional sidewalk crossing in that south, just called the southwest corner, I think would be problematic, particularly since we're making the investment of a flashing beacon to the north side of the crossing. It seems to put more of our emphasis there along with, you know, we're just, you may have to get into more, more costs with right-of-way acquisition and otherwise, which, you know, time, money is of the essence in order to get down to Magnolia, so.
Excellent.
One question I had is you mentioned in the 2019, I was looking at my photographs from the shoulder-to-the-shoulder participation pre-COVID, right, what public meetings looked like pre-COVID at the library. And it was pretty well attended. Do we recall how many people participated in the online survey as well?
There were, there were a couple of them. So there was the survey of the alternative of the.
Yeah, not the recent one, but the 2019.
So the one about routes. There was a survey about routes, yeah. I want to say that it was about 100. Is that accurate, Duane?
I think that's, okay.
It was about 100, yeah.
Okay. And I think that's, that's the, I'm certainly going to support moving something forward. And, but I would, you know, I think just want to acknowledge and my appreciation to citizens who have participated throughout the life cycle of this. And it's kind of like sometimes, sometimes these public projects are like, you know, redecorating the house and it can take a few iterations. And so I would hate for someone, I know what I hate about politics and politicians are saying you're going to do something and then you pivot to do something completely different. And so I just want to acknowledge that we were going in a very different direction in 2019. And we're doing a much, I think, I think my sense detection is that a scaled-down project. But just acknowledgement that I think, to be fair, pre-COVID, a lot of participation, a lot of support for something substantial and meaningful on 14th Street that I don't think we're going to be able to deliver because I don't think we have the support for that. That's all I have.
Anyone else have anything?
Do we know, do we know what the engineering, the additional engineering? So if you went with option one, what the additional engineering costs are going to be?
Yes, we've received estimate from our engineer. And we've already expended about $200,000 in design and outreach funds. It will be about another $90,000 to design and then some additional money then for VDOT permitting and all that. So we'll end up with a construction budget of less than $700,000.
Less than $700,000, so $600,000 or so, okay.
Something like that, yeah. Any other questions?
I would just be really curious how there's, how you get to $200,000 in engineering expenses and then suddenly I got to dig into another $100,000 when there's all the survey that's done. I mean, it's, that there are components of the project that were envisioned previously that are accomplished in the alternative, right? I mean, there's, there are other, I mean, I don't know if, and again, I know that you all are looking out for the best interest of our citizens and optimizing costs. But I mean, $100,000 to dig in deeper, again, $300,000 in design on a million-dollar project is.
Yeah, it is, it's definitely higher than it should be. But I mean, some of that is because they've really designed multiple projects for us or they're going to end up designing two projects for us, even though we're only going to build one project. And especially the amount of public outreach, you know, when you're paying an engineer, you're paying them for their time and public outreach is time-consuming. So it was, we ended up with a lot of time spent with public outreach and comment processing and all that stuff. So I recognize it was, yeah, it is a lot unfortunately because of pivoting. And you would hope that, you know, at the beginning of a project, before you go into the grant application cycle, that we would sort of all be on board and you'd have something. But I think from the get-go, this project, there was just a lot of opposition to the project. So it became very tough.
Well, a lot of opposition, I mean, I think, I think just to set the record, right, I mean, the opposition came recently for 35 people. Right? Okay. So we had 100 people participate in a public meeting, 100 people in a survey, and we've had 35 people stop the process.
That's up to you, but it's opposite process or not, yeah?
But it's just context, not a lot of opposition relative.
No, we had, we had more opposition when it was cutting right down through the tree streets. And when we took that off the table, those folks kind of jumped on the 14th Street handle. So, you know, what's good for me is not good for everybody. So we're looking at the 14th Street option now. And this option number one seems to be the most appealing to the most people and it disrupts more people's lives than any option we've had for.
Disrupts less people's lives.
Pardon?
Less people's lives.
Less people, yeah. Did I say more?
Yes, you did.
My bad. I'm sorry. It disrupts less people's lives and it impacts less people, you know, inclement weather, crossing roads and that sort of thing, so.
But do we, do we know if the folks that have been in opposition to it would be, and I mean, are going to endorse this idea?
We could only, you know, follow the public outreach methods that are available to us. We've done surveys, we've done public meetings, we've done the comment sheets and all that stuff. So I mean, if there could be a thousand people out there that think differently, but we, they have not showed up to talk, so that's what we know.
And the concern from the people that live on that street and have to park on that street was parking and the one-way traffic. And we've eliminated that and gone with two-way highway, building a sidewalk to get you from park to park. And we've accomplished a main goal here.
Mine, yeah, I agree with you. I think it's the best we can do in the circumstances, but yeah.
Yep. So do we have a consensus that we can move forward with option one, guys?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Dudey.
Okay, item number nine is to consider adopting a resolution regarding the Harmon Monument. Mr. Hamm.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just as a reminder, the Code of Virginia required the council to hold a public hearing and then offer a notice regarding the Harmon Monument when it was relocated or removed from its historical location in what's known locally as Constitution Park. In response to that legal notice, the city received what should be regarded as four bona fide offers regarding the monument, one being from Mr. Mark Harmon, who is a descendant of William Harmon on behalf of the Harmon Family Association. We also received an offer, a response from the Daughters of the American Confederacy. I think Mr. Harmon in our communication and conversation is referred to the UDC. And I apologize if I'm not stating the name of that organization correctly. We also received an offer from Lee Lodge 209, that's the local Masonic Lodge, and an offer from the Shenandoah Battlefields Foundation. The Shenandoah Battlefields Foundation offered a very general, imprecise offer to assume responsibility for the monument essentially if no one else stepped forward to do it. And they did not, at the time, contemplate a final destination or an appropriate display for the monument. Similarly, and it should be acknowledged, that the Daughters of the American Confederacy were the original donors of the monument to the city. And they have regularly communicated interest in its preservation and goodkeeping. The Lee Lodge 209 offered a very specific, or the most specific among the offers, and that is their intent would be to locate the monument on the lodge property here in Waynesboro on West Main Street. Mr. Harmon on behalf of the family offered a more general proposal, but he included a couple of things. One is a desire to work with other stakeholders for an appropriate outcome. And then also ultimately, if no suitable outcome could be identified, the family is prepared to locate the monument on some family-owned property in Swope. Mr. Harmon communicates a desire, as do several other offers, that the monument ultimately remain in Waynesboro on display, honoring the history of Mr. Harmon and his family and their history of service, not just to the community but to the nation. Originally, in the communication, it seemed as if the Lee Lodge 209 was going to present as perhaps a preferred candidate for recommendation. However, Mr. Harmon expresses concern about security, ongoing security for monuments of this nature in the current times in which we live and has some specific preferences with respect to display, security fence, surveillance, and lighting. Those preferences, I think it would be an overstatement to say that were problematic for the Lee Lodge. But it did prompt them to pause and think about how they might accommodate those preferences. The good thing is, I think, Mr. Harmon expresses the ability to raise funds to accomplish those preferences. But also, more recently, I spoke with Mr. Harmon today and he expresses an ability and willingness and even enthusiasm to work with any bona fide offer in this regard. And I think he's having ongoing communications with the Daughters. I think there's ongoing communication with Lee Lodge. Ultimately, it brings me to a recommendation to the council. Ultimately, it brings me to a recommendation to the council that, um, this evening we adopt a resolution that transfers ownership and title of the monument, um, to Mr. Harmon on behalf of the Harmon Family Association. And then Mr. Harmon has the liberty and discretion to work with, um, other candidates as he sees fit. And it, um, kind of takes the council or the city manager out of the, um, position of trying to sort through and decide between, um, which appear to me on the face to be several, um, bona fide and worthy offers. But I think, uh, Mr. Harmon expresses, um, an eagerness to kind of work through and explore possibilities in that regard. So I have a, a resolution that accomplishes that for your consideration.
Thank you.
And I think it's important to note that, um, while there is immediately apparent, um, commonly shared, um, interest in having the monument, um, remain in Waynesboro, um, the, the resolution doesn't guarantee that that would happen. And at the end of the day, if Mr. Harmon and the family decided that no, ultimately the best place is not Waynesboro, we, as a community, would have to be okay with that. And if there are questions, otherwise I would ask the council to consider, uh, the resolution.
Any questions? Okay. Uh, do we have a motion to adopt a resolution transferring title and custody of the Harmon Memorial or Harmon Monument to Mark Harmon, descendant of William H. Harmon, and representing the Harmon Family Association? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you all. All right, item number 10 is to consider adopting a resolution urging the General Assembly to mandate, mandate timely transfer of Virginia Department of Corrections inmates from our regional jail.
This is a, a resolution that supports, uh, the legislation akin to what, uh, Councilman Short described in the work session. Um, you know that, uh, our daily population at the Middle River Regional Jail has been running, um, in the 700s, occasionally going over 800. Part of the, uh, contributing factor to that is, um, the fact that we have about 150 state responsible inmates in the facility. Periodically, we've communicated with, um, the Department of Corrections and asked them to remove and relocate, those state responsible individuals. And, um, in the past, we've had limited success. We've had a couple of, um, efforts that, um, made an impact, a beneficial impact, but then, um, we lapsed back into, to bad habits. And so this resolution, um, is an endorsement and will communicate support for, uh, legislation that has been introduced, um, by the, um, General Assembly delegation from Harrisonburg that will require the state to take timely responsibility for, um, those inmates in regional facilities.
Any questions for Mr. Hamm? All right. Is there a motion to, uh, adopt a resolution urging the General Assembly mandate timely transfer by, uh, the Virginia Department of Corrections from Middle Regional, Regional Jail? Thank you, Mr. Short.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haasiter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. All right, item number 11 is to receive a report regarding proposed, uh, voting ward redistricting, necessitated by the 2020 census and consider setting a public hearing on redistricting for March 14th, 2022. Mr. Hamm?
So, uh, Luke, I'll do an introduction and then, yeah, pull up the map. But I'm going to do an introduction and just general content, and then if you can step us through the maps and the charts. So, um, the Constitution expresses, uh, the principle of one person, one vote. And, um, each year, each 10 years after we do, um, after the United States accomplishes a decennial census, localities who elect, um, officials by ward are required to review those, the ward composition and make adjustments to preserve that one-person, one-vote, um, principle. It's nearly, and that's, um, other goals of redistricting ought to be, uh, that, uh, districts should be composed of contiguous and compact territory. Any citizen, um, of the locality can compel the governing body to redraw the lines if we fail to do so. Again, districts should be contiguous, compact, and so be, um, constituted as to give nearly as practicable representation and proportion to the population of the district. We should rely on, uh, boundaries such as road and natural features. And, um, I think that's, that's it. So, uh, we worked this year to accomplish the redistricting with, um, kind of an informal work group. Uh, Mr. Short served on that, um, work group. Mayor Henderson, uh, participated in that. Ms. Jeffers participated in, um, the meetings that we had and we had a representative of the Board of Elections who attended one meeting. Ultimately, however, redistricting is the responsibility of the local elected body. So, um, it's on us to accomplish this. Tonight, uh, we're going to step through sort of the numbers of this year's, or the 2021 redistricting and, um, ask the council to identify a preferred map, which will be the subject of a 30- or 45-day comment period and, uh, a public hearing, which we will schedule for March. So, Mr. Jude, can you help us with that?
This right here is the existing wards. Um, as you can see, the, the variance down here, the, this first column is the population from the 2020 census. The entire city's population was 22,196, which means that each ward should come out to about 5,550-ish. Um, as you can see, Ward D is now over 6,000, while Ward A has slipped, uh, down to 5,200. So the variance between them has grown significantly. The, the top-to-bottom variance from Ward D down to Ward A is like 16%. I think we have a maximum of, of 10% by, by statute. Uh, there's a few other things that are sort of odd. Again, we're supposed to sort of follow natural boundaries as much as possible, which is hard to do with the census blocks and with the populations. But under the current wards, we have this sort of odd cutout of, in Ward C. Uh, we have to cut Ward D on, um, Crompton here. And then we also have to cut a number of folks who are, uh, in sort of the country club area, end up being in Ward B because the, the line goes along that road there. Uh, this is Alternative 2.2. Again, there were several different iterations. There was a, a second, Alternative 2, that would, folks in that committee sort of settled on as, as what we wanted to work off of. And then there's several variations of that that we came up with and then filtered out anything that involved, uh, altering an incumbent or, or a polling place. Uh, so this is Alternative 2.2. Uh, this still has a pretty big population spread, but it's within the margin that is allowable. Ward A would be the largest at 50, almost 5,800, and Ward C would be the smallest at almost 5,300. That said, Ward C and D have a significant amount of expected population increase in the near future. So I think it's, we can justify them having smaller populations at, at the moment. We end up with a few odd things. For one, the York-Linhurst area is split. Though we also resolve a number of other things. We make the split in Jefferson Park a little bit more logical. Um, the Ward B western line follows Rossar Avenue, which we think will be a much more logical terminus. Um, and then we still follow the railroad tracks on, on the east side. And, uh, between C and D. The Oak Hill area is moved over to Ward A to try to compensate for population change as well. And then this is Alternative 2.3. This provides us with a much more balanced population set. So each ward is very close to the mean. Um, Ward C and D are still slightly smaller, but only, you know, 50 to 60 people smaller. Uh, for this to work, you have to move the Brandon Latt Apartments into Ward D, um, and then alter slightly the line around Jefferson Park. And then the northern boundary for Ward B is, is Broad Street. And again, Oak Hill is still moved into Ward A. But other than that, most of the boundaries are fairly logical. The, the main boundaries are the railroad tracks, the Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks, the river, Broad Street, Rossar Avenue, and CSX tracks.
So, thank you, Luke. If there are questions, um, from council, we'd be happy to receive them and address them now. I think to be clear, the staff recommends that the council identify Alternative 2.3 as the preferred map and make that the subject for the advertisement comment period and public hearing.
Okay, is there a motion to identify map version 2.3 as a preferred map?
Uh, actually, I have a question. Do you want to do a question before or after the motion?
Well, we.
Go ahead. Okay, um, uh, the, when we propose the map and have the public hearing, is that then the only thing we can vote up or down? Or is that still something that then could be, uh, changed?
There may be some small changes that are allowed, but given the public comment period, um, and some of the advertisement, I think if you were to change it significantly, you might have to go back to the drawing board and re-advertise.
I just, I want to make sure we know what we're doing.
Okay. Good. Is there a motion to identify map version 2.3 as a preferred map?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
Wouldn't mind, I'd just take a moment to, uh, commend Luke and Keith and, and staff and our friends at Victoria Board for all the hard work that went into, um, to this effort. Um, it's, it's, um, I think exciting to see, uh, a balance, um, across our city, so.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Dr. Haasiter. Any discussion? I just want to, uh, go with, uh, Terry Short here and agree that, uh, the staff and everybody did a tremendous job putting this together. Uh, the session that I sat in on looking at the numbers, the way they fluxed, the way different maps were coming out, it's not an easy process and they made it a very fair process. And as you can tell by the numbers, they really, uh, almost got all the wards equal. So, great job.
Thank you. We're grateful that Mr. Jude is part of the organization.
I am, I am very thankful of that. All right, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you all very much. Item number 12 is to hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget in the amount of $5,021,014. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, this evening, item number 12 was to consider holding, or hold a public hearing and consider introducing an ordinance in the amount of $5,021,014. State code requires that any type, any time a locality amends its budget by more than 1%, which for the city of Waynesboro during 2022 is $1,220,760, that a public hearing is required. Uh, the main components of this budget amendment are the encumbrance roll forward from the fiscal year 2021, annual comprehensive financial report, and the amount of $3,030,000. Um, most of that is comprised of paving funds and then there's also funds for the North Delphine rebuild project and about $240,000 to continue take-home vehicle program in the police department. There are also, um, there's also a combination of American Rescue Plan Act funds and local fund balance in that position and the amount of 1 point, $1,175,000 to provide premium pay to full-time and part-time employees. American Rescue Plan Act funds and the amount of $500,000 to provide for engineering of a raw water tank in the water fund. And it should be noted on this project, it'll require approximately $2,000, $2 million more of the American Rescue Plan Act funds and a million dollars in that position to complete the project. This is just to appropriate the funds to do the engineering for that project. Um, Councilman Short asked in the, um, work session and probably good to do as a reminder, total American Rescue Plan Act funds received or, or to be received will be about $9 million. This will end up occupying about $3.3 million, which will leave about $5.7 million of those funds. Fourth piece of this is to appropriate some sales and meals tax revenues in the amount of $250,000. Forty-five thousand of that is to cover the holiday, um, the additional holiday added for this fiscal year at the last, um, at city council's last meeting, uh, the other additional holidays will be covered during the 2023 budget. And then also $200,000 for, um, to provide adjustments for the emergency operations center and fire department, uh, pay. The, um, the staff is, was still working on, um, some other adjustments and some other options for the police department. And then finally, uh, about $65,000 of the amendment is, uh, for miscellaneous grants, insurance, and donations, and sales of materials. Uh, most of that 65 is a grant received for Office on Youth and the amount of $38,000 from the Department of Criminal Justice to support delinquency prevention and intervention efforts for the juvenile justice system, uh, $10,800 that comes from restricted reserves, that Parks and Rec had received donations to add new dugouts at one of the parks, and $10,408 for insurance reimbursements received due to damage, due to damage at the Ridgeway Park pool.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Do you have any, thank you, Mr. McCormick. All right. I hereby open the public hearing to consider introducing an ordinance, amending the fiscal year 2022 budget in the amount of $5,021,014.
No one has signed up to speak, sir.
I close the public hearing. Um, is there a motion to introduce this ordinance? Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Haasiter. Uh, this, any discussion? All right, this motion will carry over till our February 14th meeting. That brings us to item number 13, correspondence, communication, and calendar. Mr. Hamm?
Just one item this evening, uh, a reminder that this Wednesday at 6:30 PM here, we have a, a budget work session. We'll be officially kicking off the 2023 budget work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I thought we just finished the budget season. All right, item number 14 is citizen comment period.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mark Harmon.
All right, Mr. Harmon, I think you spoke before. The rules are you got three minutes.
I'm trying not to take up too much of your time. It's getting late.
No, that's all right.
I, um, really want to thank the city manager, Mr. Hamm. Uh, our conversation last week inspired me to do some research and it's been fantastic. So thank you for all your help, too. I want to thank the council for your time. On behalf of the Harmon Family Association, the SCV and the UDC, uh, we all thank you. Humbled and honored. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Carol King.
Was she the lady sitting next to you there? She's gone.
Ms. Evelyn Cotton.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Ms. Cotton.
I believe I'll be quick as well. I just wanted to thank all of you guys for your tremendous hard work, especially Mr. Jude, um, on the 14th Street Phase 3. Um, you questioned whether you think that the people who objected, um, um, or had the negative response will be happy with this response. I, for one, can tell you I am very happy with this response, uh, with this new, um, new plan. This is exactly what I asked for from the very beginning, was let's just put a sidewalk on 14th and put a crosswalk. So I'm glad we got there. I'm sorry it took so long to get that way. But I think that what you're doing will enhance the neighborhood as well as the safety of pedestrians. So I really just want to thank you. Um, I would like to offer one suggestion, and that is if we can put a continuous sidewalk on one side, I would suggest why not just work on that one side and let the other side go to save some money. And then perhaps we could use what, some of the money we save to put in more four-way stops. I honestly believe that would also be in the interest of pedestrian safe, uh, safety. But thank you very much and I really, really appreciate that you heard the citizens. And I really do think that, the, you know, all the complaints I heard, and I heard many before we started counting the 35. Uh, we just weren't counting when we had the meetings in the library, I don't think. But we were there complaining. But I think that the complaints I've heard, I think, will definitely be satisfied by this, by this option. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Mr. Wayne Noldy.
Wayne Noldy from Mount Sydney. I'm here as a representative of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Waynesboro at 565 Pine Avenue. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Jude for sending me an email this afternoon, letting me know about this meeting. And I would like to. about this meeting, and I would like to thank council members and Mr. Giudae and his staff for all the work they've done to listen to the citizen comments. I'll echo Ms. Cotton in that I can certainly say our group will be very much supportive of option one. While we might have preferred cliffside route, we certainly understand the reality of the situation, and we only see as, the little bit I've been able to see, which is just a PDF of one block, but the, Mr. Giudae's email explained the concept, that this is a win-win for everybody. We certainly have no objections to it, and we think, well, what you're doing is going to benefit the most number of people, and it'll still achieve the overall objective of making access to the park easier. So I'd like to thank you all again, and look forward to working with you till this thing's built.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
That's it. All right, well, then that brings us to the last item of business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Meeting adjourned?
Do I have to vote on that?